Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024 Meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'd please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Susanna Ballard. Commissioner Joan De Zero.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Laird. Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair Tiffany Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Lonnie Stevenson. Commissioner J.P. Thornton. Chair Jim Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Gabrielle Medley.
Here.
Commissioner Mary Costa.
Is that it? Okay. We have three vacancies today, so if the three alternates would please step forward and fill the vacant seats at our Diaz. Appreciate that. And while you are doing that, correspondence and announcements, Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since the planning commission last met, there has been several actions by the city council taken on items that were that were heard by the planning commission at some point. On September 10th, the Bahama Avenue Major General Plan Amendment and the rezoning were remanded back to the planning commission by the city council for further review. We don't know what that constitutes yet. Since the applicants just got back to us yesterday, finally, about a month after the hearing, we don't know what their plans are yet, but that could be coming back. The Trinity subdivision plat, which you, some of you may remember, the new development agreement for their modified subdivision plat was approved by council also on September 10th. On September 24th, the Plaza Hermosa Minor General Plan Amendment and rezone were both approved by city council. And that's all I have for updates.
Okay, let's move to the minutes of the last meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections to those minutes by commissioners? Ms. Wilson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Wilson. Do we have a second?
A second.
And a second by Ms. Zero to approve the minutes as written. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, let's call for the question.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Let me first start by saying that this is a public hearing and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item. There will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that any one of the public that wishes to speak limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than five minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's exceptions and conditions of approval, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. The first item on today's agenda is ID 244488. This is a request for approval of a planned development rezone and general development plan for 2801 Highway 95 north from limited commercial district PD, which is planned development, C1 PD, to general commercial district planned development, C2 PD. Mr. Gilbert, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first slide I have up is the area map. The subject property is a 10-acre parcel that was previously owned by the city and sold to Anderson Powersports by the city council in February of 2024. The property was previously intended for a major retailer to develop the site, and the city council ordinance was approved establishing a planned development for that purpose in 2008. That project was never built, and the properties remain vacant ever since. The entire east side of the property butts the right-of-way for Highway 95 with dead-end connections to the residential neighborhood to the west and south via Deepwater Lane and Cactus Run Drive. The cul-de-sac ends for both of these streets are abandoned, but not the existing streets themselves, which terminate at the property line. To the north is a major drainage way separating the property from the retail development to the north, and that is right here. The next slide I have up is the zoning map. The subject property is currently zoned C1 Limited Commercial. The proposed use of the property as a vehicle sales establishment is more consistent with C2 general commercial zoning, hence this rezoning application being filed. Surrounding zoning is L.I. Light Industrial to the east, and that's the orange. C2 general commercial to the north, and that's the hatched red. And R1 Single Family Residential to the west and south, and that is all this yellow here. And then you can see further perimeter. There's more light industrial here, here, more commercial. So it's, I like to refer to that neighborhood as a hole in the donut. Next slide up is the general plan map. The subject property is and all surrounding property, including the residential subdivision to the west and south, presently identified as CMU-n, Commercial Mixed Use, on the general plan future land use map, which is consistent with the zoning category being requested. The next slide is the general development plan, the site plan component. The site plan part of the general development plan, the middle, shows the southern 70% of the 10-acre subject parcel taken up by the project. And that is here. It's rotated 90 degrees, so north is to the right. And the key features are the 25-foot maximum height showroom building that runs the length of the west side of the project on the setback line, and that is here. And extends along the south side, almost to the right-of-way for Highway 95, and that is going down here. This building will have masonry bottom portion with metallic upper part facing the residential neighborhood and will not have any windows facing the residential neighborhood in order to act as a screening wall in lieu of a second separate but far smaller in height perimeter wall. Interior to the project is the main showroom, offices, service center, and the architectural tower features, and that is here. That will have the additional height requested up to the 45 feet maximum. The north 30% of the parcel, and that is the Phase 2 shown, which is right here, I'm circling with the mouse, will remain undeveloped, but any future development would have to conform to all C2 design standards. Next slide I have up is the grading plan. The project is requesting a maximum grade of 577.5 for the project, which is over 10 feet below the surface of Highway 95 at the proposed north entrance. That's here. Location, so the project will be significantly below grade of the adjoining roadway, similar to the Hobby Lobby shopping center to the north. This requested elevation is also about where the top of the berm on the west side of the property is currently set, and that is over here. This is the berm. This, let's see here. So this elevation would permit smoothing out the site by raising the bottom of the basin up with the fill. Next slide I have up is the general development plan, view angles from neighborhood component. This collection of site sections shows view angles from adjoining residential dwellings towards the project from different locations around the perimeter to show the effectiveness of using the opening-free exterior walls of the showroom to act as a buffer and screening barrier from the activity taking place on the other side, as well as reducing already existing highway noise coming across the vacant property. Note how difficult the 45-foot central showroom tower features will be to see from the adjoining homes, and that the yellow is the area that's not visible from the adjoining homes, and those 45-foot tower features I'm circling here. Now, all these drawings were provided by the applicant. I do want to note that. So these are the 45-foot features. And here's the adjoining homes and the person on their back porch looking up at, over the barrier walls. Next slide is the general development plan, concept drawing, looking from the east. This is simply an artist's concept of the central showroom, service center, and office areas of the project to give a sense of the style of development. And your packet's contained more of these concept drawings, but again, these are just artist's renderings to show the tower features with the rest of the central component. These are the tallest features of the development right here that you see on this. This next slide is the general development plan, the requested allowances component. The applicant has requested nine separate allowances to be approved as part of this general development plan and rezoning approval request as follows. The number one, the side setbacks shall be 20 feet, which with C2 zoning, it would be normally zero. The rear setbacks shall be 35 feet, which again would be normally zero with the C2 that's being requested. Number three, the main building pad elevation to be set at 577.5 feet. Number four, maximum height of the main building shall be 36 feet, and that's the interior structure, not the perimeter. Number five, the maximum height of the tower roof feature of the showroom set at 45 feet. Number six, maximum height of the perimeter showroom building, that's the one that'll be used partly as a barrier wall, set at 25 feet. Number seven, proposed showroom building on the setback to satisfy the requirements of a wall buffer with the neighboring properties. And that's the setbacks that they listed in one and two above that they're self-imposing. Number eight, proposed site plan shall be considered the approved plan of development for the PD approval. And number nine, any future use on the unused portion of the lot will conform to the C2 district standards and permit any C2 general commercial uses. Mr. Chairman, this completes my staff presentation. I'll turn it back over to you.
Are there any questions of staff by commissioners on this application? Anybody at all? If not, is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your name for the record, and present your case.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, staff. My name is Michael Gordon with Desert Land Group. We're here representing the owner of the property.
Put your microphone on.
It's green.
Green?
No, green. It's green.
Thank you.
Couldn't hear. Again, Michael Gordon with Desert Land Group, representing the applicant or the owner of the property here today, who's with us as well. I just, first of all, staff did a great job of kind of explaining the history and what's being proposed here today. I put together a simple little slideshow presentation I'll walk through just to kind of, so you can hear it from our perspective, what's going on, what's being proposed, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have today. First of all, a little history here. This property was originally, has been vacant commercial property for a long time. It was originally rezoned as a C1 PD, as staff alluded to, about 15 years ago for a very specific big-box retail use that never materialized, obviously, and so it sits here vacant today. Last year, about this time, and into the first part of this year, there was an application to purchase the property from the city. The city went through the process of auction of the property, and the Anderson Powersports, Anderson Automotive Group was the successful bidder in that auction process and acquired the property earlier this year. At the time, obviously, knowing that the existing property had a PD on it for a very specific use, like I mentioned, it was known, we talked about it in, at the council meeting when the property was acquired, that more than likely we would be back in front of planning and zoning and council in the future to amend that PD to fit the proposed use and proposed development, and that may happen here. After that auction process, we sat down with ownership, we sat down with our architects and engineers, and really tried to figure out how we could work to build a first-class commercial development on this site. This was all predicated from the Anderson Powersports Group here, who has two locations currently in town that they've outgrown. They're looking to consolidate that into a state-of-the-art powersports dealership, very similar to the Anderson Automotive Group's dealerships in terms of quality of construction, service, et cetera. And so what you see today is a representation of that, of what ownership is intending to build. If we're successful today and successful at council, we'll be moving forward quickly into the design and build process to bring this to life. As we analyzed the existing PD in the site, it was apparent that we were going to have to modify the PD to fit this proposed use, and the zoning change from a C1 PD to a C2 PD, as staff alluded to, to facilitate the automotive sales use that's being proposed here today. So that's really the precipice of why we're here and why we're amending this PD. In doing so, we really had to study the site in terms of how and where we place the buildings and how we make this work. The site sits significantly below Highway 95. It sits above the surrounding neighborhoods. There are two old access points off of the neighborhood. Those will not be used in the future. As we looked at this site and tried to figure out where to position the powersports dealership as we look at the site plan here. First of all, I'm going to back up before I talk about the actual proposed plan. As staff alluded to, you know where the subject property is. I just want to reiterate the fact that this is in the commercial mixed-use nodal, which does, according to the general plan, is set up exactly for this, for high-intensity commercial uses and mixed uses, consistent with everything around it in terms of the general plan. As well as from a zoning standpoint, I like your illusion of the hole in the donut. I didn't think about it that way, but in reality, it is. There's a small pocket of residential neighborhood here. R1, R2, and R3 surrounded entirely by commercial and light industrial uses. All of the property adjacent directly to the north is C2 PD. Everything to the east, on the other side of the highway, light industrial. Some of the property north and west is light industrial. And then further south at the bottom of the screen, after the R3, everything along the highway goes back to C1, C2, and industrial uses as you work through town. So the zoning that's being requested is consistent with what's there today. The use as well, very consistent with what you see going on in this area. Obviously, you have some retail uses. You also have a series of car dealerships, used car lots, boat dealerships, et cetera, both across the street and north and south of this proposed site. Back to the site plan, the development plan. Staff went over this again very well. But as we looked to position this on the property, we really had a lot of constraints to work around. How far below the highway it was, like I talked about, how do you get down to a specific elevation and make that work from a traffic and access standpoint? How do we be sensitive to the neighborhood in terms of placement of the buildings? How do we work on that circulation off of the highway in and out of the site, trying to avoid having to use or ask for use into the residential neighborhood, which we're glad we don't have to? So all those things came into account as we worked through this property. We came up with this, a version of this site plan that we first met with the neighbors on. We ultimately held two neighborhood meetings to work through this. The reason, the primary reason for the location of the buildings in this location and the excess land on the north was twofold. First of all, really, threefold. First of all, again, getting down off the highway and getting access into this property and the way the grading needed to work and drainage having to go to the north, this became the most reasonable solution in terms of circulation and access into the site. Additionally, in terms of sensitivity to the neighborhood, we felt it was best to leave any excess land to the north where it butts the wash and it butts other commercial uses. We don't know what that use will be yet, hopefully something complimentary to what the powersports dealership will be, but because of the unknown, it's better to leave that up against existing commercial, kind of in between this project and the existing commercial. And we feel like this project, when we look at how it was designed and why it was designed that way, putting it in this location up against the neighborhood provides certainty to the neighborhood of what they're going to have in their backyard, what that's going to look like. It's there. It's there day one when this project is built, and they get some of the concerns and some of the things that you may hear today mitigated from day one instead of leaving a parcel up against the residential neighborhood that's unknown. So that was the three things that really drove positioning this property on this, this project on this end of the site. We met with the neighbors. There's some currents. There were some concerns. You'll hear some of those concerns today. One of the concerns you'll hear is about how this was a PD from 15 years ago and that those, what was approved back then, you know, should be in place today. Again, back to what I said before. A big-box retail plan of development today is not feasible in this town. If it was, it would be built already. We know big-box retail is actually going the other direction in the world today. Certainly not feasible to build something like that today here. So it required this change, and it required to put this use here, it required the zoning change that we talked about, and it required us to kind of look at the setbacks and the conditions that were part of that original PD and amend those in order to fit this proposed design. Some of the other concerns of the neighborhood that we worked through, obviously, light pollution they're concerned about. There already is a lot of light pollution happening from the existing commercial and industrial stuff along the highway into the north, a lot of noise pollution coming off of the highway. Those were things we felt like with this design, I'll talk about, we could help mitigate some of those concerns. One of the other concerns was making sure that there weren't windows and doors and things looking down into the neighborhood, looking down into the properties, both from the showroom buildings on the perimeter as well as the primary building in the middle of the site, making sure that, you know, the visitors, the users of the facility, as well as the staff, aren't able to look down in and creating that privacy, if you will, for the neighborhood. Went with the neighbors, listened to their concerns, came back, amended a few things, had a second meeting to try and address those concerns. We feel like we addressed those concerns fairly well across the board. And with that, we put together some of the things that you're going to see here today. View of the concept renderings. Staff showed the first one. You have the rest in your packet, but it gives you a feel for where Anderson Powersports is trying to go with the look and feel of the building. It could be a first-class facility. It'll look fantastic on the highway and be consistent with everything else that's happening along the highway. This was an important study that we did after the first neighborhood meeting to really look at how we were designing this project and how we could mitigate those concerns I talked about from noise pollution, light pollution, visibility interference, if you will. And so what you're seeing on the screen is really the reason why that showroom building that's on the perimeter of the site was positioned where it was at. First of all, like Mr. Gilbert said, setbacks could be zero in this case, up against residential. We, obviously, that isn't, isn't the right thing to do. Also, the site constraints with the elevation changes require us to pull these buildings back a little bit. But the primary drivers on this design were twofold. One, keep the primary sales and operation building more in the center of the site, closer to the highway for visibility, but as well as to keep that away from the neighborhood. So all of, all, the majority of your activity is going to happen in that primary building in the center of the site. That's where vehicles are displayed. That's where your sales activity is taking place. That's where your parts store is. That's where your maintenance and service department is. So all that stuff is as far away from the neighborhood as possible. The showroom building on the perimeter is just that. It's indoor storage and showroom for the boats, for the ATVs, for the things that this powersports dealership will sell. So instead of having, like they do unfortunately on the south side of town right now, a big yard with vehicles and boats parked outdoors all the time, they'll be organized neatly indoors. It's a place to walk people through, show them the inventory, show them the options that they have, and create, and at the same time, while creating that space for the showroom, it also creates what we feel is a good buffer to the neighborhood. So by positioning that around the perimeter and using that in lieu of just a typical six-foot screen wall, eight-foot screen wall, you're able to use that building as the buffer. And so that was really our primary goal, positioning that showroom. And what you see it does in these site sections is when you're at the lower elevation in one of the homes, in one of the backyards, and you're looking at this project, having that showroom there, that line that you see, everything in yellow on the screen and down will not be visible from the existing neighborhood. And so one of the conditions being, instead of the typical screen wall that's required between commercial and residential, we're using the showroom buildings as part of that screening where the showroom buildings stop. On the site plan, it shows the typically required screen wall that will extend off the end of the showroom buildings and enclose the site. The area between the showroom buildings and the neighbors, that 20-foot setback on the south and the 35-foot setback on the west will be landscaped and dressed up to help, again, visually help mitigate the buildings and what's going on and help provide that buffer that's there. We also did a few rendered views of what, from different parts of the site, when you're looking from one of the lots down below, from one of the backyards up above, that building that you see, the block foundation, the showroom building, some landscaping, you can see how in these elevations, in these renderings, you're not seeing that primary building that's in the middle of the site. You're seeing landscaping. You're seeing building. You're seeing a buffer. That buffer will, again, help mitigate sound off of the highway, sound, any sound out of the primary retail sales building that's associated with this project will also help block light pollution from the highway. And without any windows and doors in the back of these buildings, it will help mitigate any noise, sound, et cetera, coming from not just this project, but the surrounding retail, surrounding commercial uses. With that, I think I'll wrap up. That's, we're excited about this project. Ownership is here as well. If there's other questions. And we think this complements the neighborhood, the surrounding commercial use as well. And we think this will fit in well, and we can do, do a good job of mitigating the neighborhood's concerns as part of that. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Any questions of the applicant by commission? Anybody at all? Mr. Stevenson?
Mr. Gordon, can you talk a little bit about the lighting plan that you have for this site?
So the lighting, all of the lighting on the interior, so there'll be no lighting on the back of the building, so nothing casting down into the neighborhood. The lighting will be downlighting. You'll have the lighting in the building, but all the showroom glass in the storefront is facing the highway. So any of that pollution from inside the building should be projecting out towards the highway. All of the site lighting, building lighting that is on the inside of the site and on the primary building will be cast down. And if I can go back to this site section, it kind of happens in reverse. So, you know, with that showroom building there as a buffer, any light that is coming out of, and again, not just this proposed project, but the existing light pollution that's there, that building will help block that in reverse. Like, for example, if you're looking at the very top section, you'll see a couple of sight lines going across the top of that house. Well, that's the reverse of what you're seeing in the colored illustration on the right. That is light, that is, you know, visibility, not just light, but also visibility from anybody on a second floor, anybody in those buildings looking over that showroom. That visibility and that, any light pollution that is there already or comes off of this project because of that showroom building blocking that at a lower level will cast over the top of the houses down below.
On that parking lot on the, on the north side of the property next to the Phase 2, the future suit, or future C2 development, is there going to be like a wall or some other, from the showroom building extending out? Is there going to be any type of perimeter wall or anything to seal that parking lot off from access to go back to that neighborhood?
Yes. Yeah, good question. At the very top of the screen coming off of the showroom, like I mentioned before, where the showroom stops, that required screen wall will be constructed adjoining the showroom and extending all the way north to the wash on the north end of the site. And same thing at a little bit on the southeast corner, where the showroom ends closer to the highway, the screen wall will also come off of the end of the building and extend out to the highway. So the entire perimeter of the site will be enclosed. There will be no access around the back of the buildings other than to get there to maintain the landscaping. There will be no access. There will be no access out of the buildings or for the public to get through that screen wall or through the buildings down into the residential neighborhood.
Not sure that uh, that was quite the question as I perceived it. Is there going to be a wall between the two phases?
Oh, uh, east and west where that dark line is. No, no, there's not a wall proposed there. There's some parking there on the, on the edge, that line is to designate, you know, what would be developed in this first phase and then the vacant parcel. Um, eventually as that, as a use becomes, known there, they will share the access point, they will share that, that parking lot, so there will not be a wall where that heavy dark, line is that's running up and down on your screen.
Right, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions of the applicant by commissioners? Anybody at all? Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay, this is a public hearing and I will now open it up to the public. If there is anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, either pro or con, now is the time to, come to the microphone. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, my name's Dennis Bucolo. 901 Deepwater Elaine.
Could you please spell your name?
B's and B O's, U C O L O.
Thank you.
And in regards to the, the rezoning application, we would, the, the residents, the property owners are happy with the dream of Anderson Powersports. They've obviously presented a nice architectural building. But not at the expense of the nightmare for the people that are going to live in, in close proximity. And this, we've already gone through this 15 years ago when it was rezoned originally from residential. So the residential has been established when this town was designed. Um, so at that particular time, the, developers and the city council worked with the, the community in the area. And met with our needs, what we're, we're concerned with. And so they established an outline of what these are. And it, one of the conditions was that this zoning is tying the conditions to the land and not the project. So here we are moving forward and we have a new uh, a, a site plan, which, it's great, but it's unacceptable for, for me in my sense that, I live at the end of the cul-de-sac and it was stated that there are zero setback in commercial. Is that normally? In a commercial setting, I would see that that would be appropriate. But when you're up against a residential community uh, that's already been established. And they're just giving us 20 instead of the proposed 50 foot that was agreed to in the original rezoning. Uh, I find that to be troubling. And, and as a consideration for the homeowners and the property owners, they were going to build a 10 foot wall that bordered the south, uh, the west side and the, and the uh, west and the south side. That would keep all obstruction and everything out of our way. At this point, I will walk out of my front door and I can turn my head and within 30 feet, I will see this building or a back of a building, okay? And if that building is partly used for maintaining and servicing and not a showroom, you know, sure, it's a wall, but there's going to be sound from it. Yes, we live next to the highway. We've been able to deal, deal with that, that's the way it is, but I feel with a 10 acre plot, there's plenty of other room to move that over into a different part of that, and that property, uh, other than the fact that they want to establish, a, a, another, a lot to sell further down the road, I don't think that should be at the expense of the property owners that border this. And so that's what our concerns are as homeowners that live next to this.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the speaker? Alright, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Please state your name for the record.
My name is George Jimenez, J I M E N E Z. I own the property on the south side of this project. If you put up the color that shows the dark onto the wall, I want to show, the one that shows the whole piece of ground that's in dark. Not, not the new buildings.
Are you looking for the site plan?
Yes, please.
This one here or the zoning plan?
The one that shows in color that's dark. That's close, that one.
We're not going to be able to hear you.
I own this property here, here.
I'm sorry, sir, you have to,
Need to come back to the microphone.
Have to use the, the microphone because you can't capture it.
We see, thank you.
I want you to understand, that at the last meeting that we had, that they brought us to out there in the deep water, in 114 degree temperature, the reason that they told us that this property, needed to be developed from this side that way was for future expansion. Now, all of us in the neighborhood are standing there looking at a 10 acre parcel with nothing on it. The north side over here has a creek between the existing commercial that's there. The RV, the boat place that's there, the, the center that they have for repairs. Now they don't have any way, or you don't have any way of knowing the noise that this project is going to make. And they have decided to put this right up against our back door. For no other reason that they seem to want you to believe that this is the best place for this. Now, we're not against him having his dream, Mr. Anderson and his super Walmart Motorsports. We're only wanting you people to understand the positioning of this building. And what it's going to mean to us as a neighborhood. That is the number one goal and because nobody's sitting there, and they can't tell you how much noise this is going to generate for the future. Once you, somebody decides that this is where it's going to be, all of us are going to be in here and we won't have a thing to say about it after that. When we already put up with the noise from the north end of the building, this side of the creek that's there, there's nothing between the creek and the other side of the commercial already. Yet they've determined to want to put this over here in the neighborhood. I think that's wrong. I think you people need to understand where we're coming from. Now he just got this property. I've been there on these properties over here since 1988. And the idea that they feel that they can just come in and make this deal happen, without giving us any idea of what they're going to make as an impact over here is not right. And you people need to understand that. That's what I came to tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Stevenson.
So if I remember back in 2008, when the big box retailer was proposing on this parcel, the location of the building that they were planning on putting was on the south end of that parcel, with a parking lot to the north. And the reason for the wall that was proposed during that time on that west side, was the buffer because there was going to be a parking lot. Is that how you all remember it at that time? That building was going to be on that south end and there was concerns about the noise and the lights. That's the reason that they put in the, the 10 foot wall.
You're right, sir.
It was,
But we were also promised.
I'm so sorry, sir, you have to come to the microphone because the people listening can't hear you on.
We were also told at the time, sir, that the same 50 foot easement that all of the neighborhood shared and my property share on the back, was going to be observed on this end, the south end. Now, none of the building that they're showing you, none of the setbacks that they're telling you that are going to be in place, observe any of these things now. They want to put this thing started right there 10 feet or right on the back of our properties, all along this south side. When they told us from the beginning, when this other project was on, the same 50 foot easement was going to be guaranteed that was already in place for the neighbors all along. Cactus Ren was going to be over here on this end of Cactus Ren, from the highway to the corner of the property. And they're not observing any of this.
Uh, okay, but again, I'm, and I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand your point of view as well. The big box retailer that was talking about that building, so that was going to be the tail end, the backside of the building, which was going to be 50 feet, from, from the back of your property, but that was going to be the backside of retailer, so that was going to be access doors. And, and delivery spots for it, so again, that 50 feet was going to be something that was going to be used, so again, and again, I may have it and not understand or remember correctly. But that was why they were talking about putting that 10 foot perimeter wall along the property was to help mitigate that noise. What they're proposing to doing is yes, moving the buildings, to, to the setback lines, but there will be no, for you, it will be the same as a block wall. That you will be looking at. Is that from 2008?
This is what was proposed. These are our homes and our properties. This was parking. The building was over here.
Oh, okay, so the building was on the north side, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, do we have that exhibit in the packet, whatever he just had there and showed?
We do not.
Can you, can you give that to Shelby, just so we make sure that we have it in the record? We can make a copy and get it back to you, but I just want to make sure that, whatever you're referencing is also in our record.
And that was from the original rezon PD. 2008, I believe it was. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name's Scott Stillman, S T I L L M A N. Um, the only, we don't have any objection as property owners to them building anything there. It's just, if, if I walk out my front door, 20 foot to the right of me is going to be this building. It, it's just too close. They should keep it at the 50 foot setback, not move it like it's right in my backyard. That's all.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Tricia Gagnon, G A G N O N. I live at 1696 Cactus Ren Drive. Couple of things, one, I mean, we, we all built our homes, purchased the property, with the premise that this was all our one and we wouldn't have anything to worry about it. When it came to the rezon thing, we met with people, I was in charge of the whole thing. And it was presented to us that we didn't have an option, that it had to be changed over to C two. We fought it and fought it and fought it, met with people, they agreed to the C one PD. With a huge, and I am happy to, I've got a stack of stuff like this from 2008, I'm happy to forward it to anyone's email. There was um, along the southern and western area, promised a 50 foot buffer in existing to the setback and existing to the wall. That building isn't going to buffer us. First of all, it's powersports, okay? There's going to be motors revving, there's going to be engines moving and everything else. And to say that there's not going to be any lighting whatsoever, how many commercial buildings have you seen with not one light bulb on the back of the building ever? We asked for the landscape buffer, they said we could have it, we asked for the wall. Now they want to abandon all of that and say that they're protecting our quality of life. And that view plan that we saw, that's presented by the developers, so that's very convenient. If someone wants to come in my backyard and see what we see. Yes, we're trying to work with them and, and with the rezon, but now everything that was presented to us is all being ripped out from underneath us. It's not right. These are our homes, these are our backyards, this is where we raised our families, this is our livelihood. It's not right that we were promised all these things and I met so many times with the architects, developers, developers with a big red ball, thrown in my face saying, don't you want the target? No, I want my, my livelihood protected, our quality of life, that's all we're asking for. So the fact that we want to abandon the walls, the setbacks and all the rest of that stuff, it's not right. And like Dennis said, those conditions were tied to the land, not the project. So now the project isn't coming to fruition, now we want to change it from the C one PD to a C two. And then what's going to happen with that north section of land? So when they, they sell it to somebody else and it gets developed, those people don't have to worry about it because guess what? It's already set up for PD. It's for C two PD. And the reason that they said this to us, they said C one PD should be more favorably, C one PD should be more favorably received by neighbors. Because it's limited commercial retail activities. This is the correct zoning for this. C two zoning would have opened up the possibility of RV dealers, tire stores, auto and boat repair, and a number of other uses which can be noisy and irritating to neighbors. I didn't type this, the city did. I just wish you would take this into consideration. I've got a whole stack of stuff like this that I'm happy to, scan and email to anybody that's interested in seeing us, but please, let's do the right thing here. These are our homes. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, any questions of the applicant, excuse me, the uh, speaker? Thank you ma'am. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this meeting. And, or this item and bring it back to the table for, excuse me, bring it back for the applicant's response to any comments that were made.
Um, I think we addressed most of those concerns in our presentation. I'm happy to answer questions or add clarity to that if there are any.
Any questions, Ms. Earl?
Hi, um, just to clarify, make sure I'm understanding, the, the wall's going to be 10 foot high? That goes around or is it lower than that?
No, the wall they're referring to was in the original kind of development, a 10 foot wall around the perimeter. And some of the, the setbacks that were part of that PD, the wall requirement that was part of that PD, again, specific, um, not to the land, specific to that plan of development that was approved in 2008. So yes, we're proposing to modify some of these things, obviously. Our setbacks are a little different than what was proposed then. And instead of a 10 foot wall, we're proposing to use where that showroom building is on the perimeter, the back of the building as that buffer.
Oh, I see, so they're going to be looking at the back of the building, which is, and is it going to be doors back?
There will be no doors, no windows, no lighting on the back.
Okay.
Landscaping and the back of the building.
And the, okay, so the landscaping behind the building. Um, and then all of the, and that's the showroom buildings that are going to be up against that area? And then the, the showroom and service area in the middle?
Correct, yeah, the larger building in the middle is, is where all the activity will take place, the maintenance will take place. The sales will take place, the showroom building um, will be on the perimeter as that buffer.
And the bay door is going to be facing the 95 for the repair work, so like.
Bay doors face the north, then the proposed building, yeah, let me bring up the, site plan. So the bay doors face the north and the highway.
Okay, on that side, so they're not going to be facing toward the neighborhood.
Neighborhood, correct, that is correct. And to answer the question about the screen wall, I mean, even if there was a six, eight or 10 foot screen wall there and then a 20 foot building, the screen wall wouldn't do anything other than screen, the lower third of the building itself, so. We feel like putting that effort into the back of the building to make the back of the building look better, the landscaping look better. So there's one clean wall there and that wall where the showroom is would be the building itself.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gordon, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, on this diagram, can you point out to me where the, neighboring property line is, let's do, let's go with the, the west side, where the neighboring property line is and is there an easement line there?
So then,
And what property is it on?
The neighboring property, the property lines are the dark, so do you see the green strip?
Yes.
That is the land, that is the 35 foot proposed setback for the building and the landscape buffer. So the property line itself is that dark dashed line.
Adjacent to the green shaded area.
Along the green shaded area.
What is the line?
On the west and on the south.
What is the line above that, the light line?
That is a, that's an old easement line, that is on the other property, that has nothing to do with this project.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Ms. Medley.
Is there any reason that you could not reposition that building to move it further away from the residential portion?
Well, like I mentioned before, we looked at it both ways, we did, a dozen different layouts of this project trying to find the best location. Part of it is the distance, the distance below the highway to get proper circulation and to get. Part of it is the distance below the highway to get proper circulation and to get the entrances and exits that we're trying to achieve. The more this slides the other direction, you're further and further below the highway. So that was one reason. Secondly, we felt like, again, providing certainty, the property is, there's excess land there, there's going to be excess land there. And so by positioning the building here, we can satisfy the neighbors' concerns, we can address these things on the front end versus having vacant land there that doesn't have a plan, that might have to come back in the future for something else. So a combination of the site constraints pushed it here. We started at, as staff said, I mean, if you take the existing PD away and commercial property, it could be zero. We weren't going to do that. We started at a 10-foot setback on the south side after meeting with the neighbors. We moved that to a 20-foot setback. The 35-foot setback in the back on the west side is really there because of the position of the building and the site and the circulation. We have to get, we can't pull the project any closer to the highway because of that grade change. In order for those driveways to get down into the site and provide proper circulation at a reasonable grade, it forces the parking lot and the circulation to be further to the west. So we tried to find that middle ground of pulling it away from the property or from the neighbors as much as possible while positioning it on the site where we thought it would work the best from a feasibility standpoint as well as a long-term development standpoint.
Okay, I understand the elevation part of it, but what about moving it down? Is it, you're just trying to protect that lot from not having anything on it to, I don't know what the intent is, if you're going to resell it or if you're going to use it as part of this project, but could you, and if it is part of this project, is there any reason you couldn't move it down so that that, the noise impact would be a lot less?
The noise impact, I mean, whether we moved it another five feet or 10 feet closer or 10 more feet away, the noise impact, the impacts that have been discussed would be the same. What you don't see on the site plan is where the wash is and where the slope is, so that excess land looks bigger than it really is. To position, to move the building that way, it really starts to take away from any feasibility to that excess land. And while obviously that might not be a concern of neighbors and surrounding properties from a property owner's standpoint and the money and investment, the money that they paid for the land and the investment they're making into this site, you need to make sure it's feasible. And so there is some excess land and that, you know, to make this all work long-term, that excess land needs to be able to be utilized. Whether it's a second phase of this project or a complimentary use, we don't know yet. But we're trying to position that, as I mentioned before, on the north side of the site where it is up against the wash and it is up against existing commercial and the highway. So that unknown component is positioned there in the middle of everything else that is already known. So the impact of that in the future should be minimized.
Mr. Gordon, I presume that one of your concerns or the owners' concerns was that the intersection just to the north of that, Kiowa and the highway, the positioning of these driveways probably came into effect because of that congestion and potential. And you are planning to use these two driveways for access to that Phase 2 parcel, is that correct? Is that what you said?
Yes, that is correct. So the intent here is the access point that's in the middle of the site would service, would be a full movement if we're successful with ADOT, would be a full movement intersection in terms of, you would more than likely have a Dcel lane and an Excel lane and you'd be able to turn left and right. There's no way in talking with city and talking with ADOT preliminarily that we're going to get that any closer to the north, any closer to that existing...
And I knew that, that's why I posed that.
The other entrance more than likely will simply be a right turn only pork chop, so to speak. So it just aids in the circulation of the vehicles, trailers, things that will be exiting this property to have a second point where they can exit and just turn right and go down the highway. Having that further down, no, we don't see that possible with it.
The point I was trying to clarify was that there's going to be no other access to that Phase 2 development and they would be relying on this layout.
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Stevenson.
Mr. Gilbert, can you go back to the zoning map? So I'm clear, the subject property we're talking about is the pink. On the west side, there is this gray, is that supposed to designate what? Because it shows like there's an additional buffer between this property and the residence, but then when we're talking on the site plan, we're saying that that's not there? What?
That's a wash.
It's not a wash. It's an, there's power lines running there.
Wait, is an easement there?
If we looked at, you know, this map's hard to tell because of the scale, but I believe the property line is actually on the left side of that gray area and the pink really should be all the way up against the yellow. There's no separate parcel there or separate wash or anything there. There are utility easements that are within that, you know, 35 feet that we're pulling the building back. There are additional utility easements for the power lines and other utilities that are running in that area.
And Mr. Chairman, there is an easement there, which is the west side of the berm of the former Kiowa Ponds property basin. There's 50-foot easement existing, but it's only on the west side. And as you see on the map, it goes down to the south. On the south boundary where the 20-foot proposed setback is, there is no such extra barriers directly to the property line of the residential neighbors.
This map has turned 90 degrees from the site plan. That's where I screwed up.
Yes, correct.
So if there's a 50-foot utility easement, we're talking about a 35-foot from the building to the property line, are we in that utility easement then 15 feet?
It's an additional 50, so it's, but what I heard from the neighbors was that the 2008 ordinance had that 50-foot easement was there already. And then there's the 50-foot additional, I'm looking at the ordinance right now, there was a 50-foot additional buffer that was put in, in that ordinance, and that's what they're referring to, for a total of 100 feet on the west. On the south, it would have been just a 50-foot buffer.
Mr. Tunaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. I would just like to clarify this. So there's, you have the residential property line, there's a 50-foot utility easement to the applicant's property line. They're proposing 35 feet to the building. So from the residential property, rear property line to the face of the building will be 85 feet because there's a 50-foot PUE parcel in between the commercial property that we're talking about and those neighbors to the west.
So then the total distance between the building and their property line is going to be what now?
85 feet on the west side.
85, okay.
West side.
So there'll be an 85-foot buffer there?
Essentially, when you count that 50-foot PUE, that's a separate parcel and then the 35-foot setback that the applicant is proposing, there would be 85 feet between the building and the rear property line.
That's where I was going before when I asked about the easement line.
To the south, there is no utility easement as such, so the building will be 20 feet from the residential property line to the building. That is correct.
Normally, on all C2 properties or zoned properties, the setback line is usually zero.
It's usually zero. There is a buffering requirement, I believe a six feet, Mr. Gilbert might be able to, it's either six feet. So there technically is a zero-foot setback, but when you're adjacent to residential properties, there is a buffer that we require, like a six-foot high wall with six-foot landscaping. So we'll call it, it's either six or 10 feet, I can't remember off the top of my head, but there would be that kind of buffer required on that south end.
Is that...
Normal, normally.
But what they're asking for is what distance?
They're asking for 20 feet.
On the south?
On the south end.
Right. Ms. Wilson?
Is that the same for the C1 zoning as well?
Yes, all commercial zoning adjacent to single-family has some sort of buffer. It's either six to 10 feet depending on the level and whatnot, but yes.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Gordon, the applicant? By commission, public hearing is closed. Thank you. All right then, we're going to bring it back to the table for city staff's exceptions and conditions of approval. And eventually discussion amongst commission and a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When, when planning staff looks at these applications, as you've seen your staff report, we analyze them based upon the general land use plan and the development code. And we find that the proposed project, based on the general plan, which is, calls for the entire area to be CMUN, the project is consistent with, with the existing general plan, future land use map. And from the development code, the findings are required for planned developments. We believe that the project meets the criteria described in the Lake Havasu City Development Code. And so staff's, staff's statement on that is that we believe it meets those requirements.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gilbert. We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion by commissioners. Commissioners? Mr. Thornton?
To address the noise, I know a lot of it's noise that you guys are concerned about. If you look at how it's laid out, the noise is all going to be, the service department would be coming from where the noise is, no track around the facility or, I'm going to be revving two strokes and revving them out around there. You got the showroom that's, that you guys are going to be, that's going to be your wall. It's a showroom, so there's not going to be any noise. Anything will keep noise down by having that wall. If there was any noise, it's going to be coming from the center of the, of the development, which is pointed directly toward the highway. So I can't see that as being any kind of issue as far as the noise concern goes. So maybe if I can help ease your, ease your mind on the people living on the south side.
Any other commissioners? Ms. Zero?
Well, I want to thank the applicant for taking into consideration what has been brought forward. I like the fact that you've given the extra buffer that wasn't necessary on that and that the bays are facing 95 in Kiowa and not facing, because as we all know, when you start revving up motors, sometimes I can hear them a long way away. So some of them are pretty powerful. We are a recreational vehicle town. That's what this town lives on, is our RVs, our ATVs. That's what people come here for. So it's nice that we're going to have, I think, a nice facility for them to come and look at and get repairs for. And taking into consideration the buffer zone and facing things away and getting the driveways fixed so that we can get in and out on the freeway, I think is going, or the highways, I think a good idea. So I appreciate your taking those things into consideration and listening to the neighbors when you looked at putting the buffer zones and things in place. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Medley?
I have one additional question. What are going to be the hours of operation?
Please state your name for the record. This is the applicant.
I'm Brent Collers. I'm the Platform Director for Powersports. So I just manage the stores. The hours of operations are from 8 to 5, Tuesday through Saturday. It might go to Mondays, but in this, this type of business, it's Mondays you're usually close.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collers. Anybody else? We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. I too think that the applicant for this, this application has done a pretty good job of buffering based on what the current zone could be, zoning setbacks could be. So I, I don't see a problem. I think they've done a pretty good job of mitigation of both light and, and noise. So anybody else? Ms. Wilson?
I'd like to move to recommend approval of Land Use Action 244488 to the City Council approving the planned development rezone and general development plan for 2801 Highway 95 North from limited commercial to planned development to general commercial district planned development and approving a general development plan with the specifically requested deviations from the development code as stated in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Ms. Wilson, a second by Ms. Zero to approve ID 244488 with staff's recommendations. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, let's call for the question. Good luck to the applicant. All right, the next portion of the meeting is the call to the public. This is where the public can address the commission on any subject whatsoever. We may not respond, but we can listen to your comments. Anybody wish to speak to the commission? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Future meetings, Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was the only item on the agenda for today and we don't have any items scheduled for October 16th. So if I could get October 16th off. It's probably, it probably feels a little strange that had so many meetings without cases recently, but there's a lot of staff review stuff in and with recent changes in code. For example, with subdivisions becoming staff review instead of public hearings, that has dramatically impacted you guys' workload. And it's not that we don't have anything going on, just want to make that clear. It's stuff that requires review by the planning commission has shrunk by no fault of anybody other than code changes. So we have the 16th off again and we don't know what we have yet for November 6th. So we'll keep you updated through Shelby here on whether we have a meeting that day or not.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.